Turn down the volume, turn it off the volume.
the evening of May the 8th, 2018. We would like to thank the partners at the Sarasota County School Board and our school board members, Chair Ziegler, Superintendent, respective members of the school board. Thank you all for being here this evening. We're looking forward to a very fruitful discussion. Welcome Sarasota High School. It's good to see you. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order and we will go to our presentation of our first item, which is our discussion regarding the closure of School Avenue, School Security Vocational and Technical Program. And I will ask Mr. Marlin, our Deputy City Manager, Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, to make the presentation.
Thank you Mayor, Madam Chair, members of the City Commission and the School Board. I'm going to ask Mr. Madam Mayor and Chair if I can have the other members of the presentation team to come on up.
Please.
All right. And if they can introduce themselves when they come up, that would be great as well.
Do we need more chairs?
Mm-hmm.
One more.
So if I can have Mr. Jones introduce himself and you know.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you again so much for conducting this meeting. I am David Jones, Principal of Sarasota High School.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Ebow, the Director of Planning for Sarasota County Schools.
Good evening. I'm Scott Limpy. I'm the Assistant Superintendent and Chief Operating Officer for the School Board of Sarasota County.
Ryan Chapdellane, General Manager, City Sarasota Planning Department.
So, Mayor Commissioners and School Board Members, the reason that we're here this afternoon is to discuss several items. Three items on your agenda this evening. One is obviously the inter-local agreement that included in the backup material related to the closure of School Avenue. The second item has been requested by the City Commission, and that is dealing with the School Resource Officer Program. And the third item this evening will be the Suncoast Technical College presence in North Sarasota. The information that we provided as part of the agenda includes several pages, and we've attempted our best to identify which one of, which of the exhibits is included, are included in your backup material. The first discussion that we will discuss this evening is the new inter-local agreement between the City of Sarasota and the School Board of Sarasota County for enhanced security around Sarasota High School. And I will have Ms. Ebow go ahead and begin the discussion of that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good evening, elected officials. We're here to talk about School Avenue today. And just for a little bit of history, we want to understand how we got here. In the late 80s, Sarasota High School, the then junior high of Sarasota, and Alta Vista Elementary all occupied one block from 41 to Euclid. As the middle school and the high school started to expand, the county started to look for alternatives to expand those opportunities. We therefore moved the middle school out to its current location on Ashton Road and started a discussion with the city on how to allow for the expansion of the high school across School Avenue. Mind you, this is pre-Columbine. So, the world was a very different place. And we were looking at our lens through a very different lens than the kids who attend Sarasota High School look through today. So, as we evaluated that, we were evaluating issues related to traffic concern. That was our primary consideration is how to make sure that the crossing of School Avenue for the students during the day would be as safe as possible. We weren't as concerned and thinking about safety and security issues because those, quite honestly, weren't as prominent and they weren't as consequential as they are today. Out of that, out of that discussion came three agreements. In 93, we signed the agreement to evaluate the traffic. In 96, we came to determination of which of the alternatives in that study we would select. And in 97, the actual agreement, which is currently exists today, allowed for the vehicular closure during the school day from 6:30 to 2:30, and an open public access for pedestrians and bicyclists. As I said, though, this was all before 99 and Columbine. This is also before 2004 and the advent of Facebook. So, this is at a time that is very different in terms of our safety and our security for our kids as we live in today. And I think you need to understand that because as people ask, well, why didn't the district think about these things back then? And why, you know, you've created this problem. It was a problem that we weren't foreseeing. It was a problem and issues that we weren't ready and didn't have to address. So, I suspect that if today we were asking that same discussion and that making that same decision, we probably wouldn't do that today. That isn't a wise planning decision that we would make today. But we can't go backwards. We are where we are today. And we need to rethink, we can't rethink decisions that were made in the past, given the circumstances they had then. We just need to move forward in the best interest of our kids. To that end, we were ready last year to bring this information to you. But we were asked by the city to conduct a traffic study, which is included in your materials this evening. I just want to make a few highlights on it. We did study the full vacation of the roadway. That is because, as you know, in the inter-local, it allows for the district to apply for a full vacation. That's not what the inter-local is for tonight, but it's a next step in the future. The results and our consultants are here tonight if you have any specific questions about the traffic study. But the summary of the results are as follows. They found and recommended that we move forward with a more permanent or temporary closure of School Avenue to all users in all modes, that being vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian. Because, one, during the school hours, there are alternatives for vehicular traffic. There are other routes that they can take. Same is true for both pedestrians and bicyclists. There's other routes that can be taken. They have also recommended there, however, that these, the district work with the city to make improvements. And the city, the district has, is amenable to those restrictions. And we will work with the city to make sure that these are taken care of. And that being improved sidewalk conditions, improved ADA conditions along the corridors of Tamisola, Shade, and Hatton Street, the kind of the area that surrounds the school, the school. So that the walking conditions are improved for all users, not just our students, but our neighbors and our community. We want to be a good neighbor with our community. So, we certainly are willing to do that. The study also recommends some improved signalization. If you're headed west, turning off of Baya Vista and going onto 41. So, that's something that we would need to, obviously, we don't have control over signalization, but we could work with the appropriate authorities to make sure that those things are done. So, that's kind of the summary of where we got to and how we're here. And the traffic study that was completed, as I said, there is a lot of detail in this traffic study. And our consultants are here to talk about them if you have any specific questions about it. But at that, I'm going to turn it to Scott, who's going to talk about, as I said, the world that has changed since the advent of Facebook and the, and the world of Columbine.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And I guess I want to start off by reiterating one thing that Kathy said that I thought is really powerful. You know, somebody has asked us a number of times during our conversations, why does the 96 agreement work? What has changed since 1996? And I would tell you that the world has changed since 1996. Everything has changed since 1996. Now Kathy and I were having a kind of a personal conversation yesterday about the fact that she and I look at this problem, this challenge, through the eyes of a, I won't give away Kathy's age, a 22-year-old woman and a 60-year-old man. We don't look at it, we don't look at it through the eyes of a 17-year-old high school junior. And those are very different perspectives. And I think as we have this conversation tonight, we need to think about this perspective of the young people sitting behind us. Because it's different. When we were in school, certainly when I was in school, I graduated in the 1970s. I didn't worry about the kinds of things that our kids worry about today. But my guess is many of the students at Sarasota High today were in elementary school when Sandy Hook happened. They were in high school when Stoneman Douglas happened. And so their perspective on school safety and security is different than the one that all of us bring to the conversation. And I just put that out there to say, let's try to change our frame of reference and see it through the eyes of the people that we serve every day. And that's the students of Sarasota High School. And I think the school board took a dramatic giant step forward in doing that, probably two months ago, when we started talking with them about our plans to more physically secure our campuses. And as we talked with them about it, what we talked about it in the context of a five-year capital plan. And I remember one day sitting in Dr. Bowden's office, and he said to me, how do I look the parent in the eyes whose school is in year four and tell them they're in year four? That was a thought-provoking question. But what it caused us to do is say, is there a way that we can establish a security standard for our schools and get all of our schools to that standard, I guess initially by the start of this school year? Whether or not that happens, I think, remains to be seen with the efforts of our, of our design and construction teams. But can we do it faster than a five-year plan? And so the school board took a pretty bold step. And they took all of the safety and security money that was in that five-year plan and moved it into year one. And said, we need you to set the standard for what physical security looks like and get our schools there this year. That is underway today. And I just want to talk about just some of the features and bring this back to Sarasota High School. So, what does that, what does that security benchmark look like? It includes things like upgraded intercom systems, upgraded camera systems, and the infrastructure that supports them. So, we have good IP cameras and infrared where you need them. It includes things like classroom door locks that can, among other things, be locked from the inside. So, when an event happens, a teacher doesn't have to go into the hallway to lock their classroom door, which by the way, should have been locked in the first place. But if it wasn't, we don't want them to have to go in the hall to do that. It includes things like strategically placed panic buttons. So, if you see something happen, you can push a panic button, notify our communication center, and send ultimately sounds to the school that would say, something's going on, take cover. Probably most significantly, though, it includes what we call single-point visitor access control. That is a way for our principals and our school staffs to know who's on their campus today and who belongs on their campus today. And for those of you who have visited Booker High School, Booker High School is probably the best example, and it's not done yet. I could tell you probably one more thing we need to do. But Booker High School is as close as any school in our district to where we want to be relative to single-point visitor access control. So, let me kind of paint a picture of it. Booker High School today has a secure perimeter defined by either buildings or fences. The combination of those things create a secure perimeter. It funnels visitors into the front door of Booker High School. When you walk into that front door, you're greeted with a couple of things. In front of you is a door that gives you access to the rest of the campus. That door is locked, and the only way you get through it is with a badge that looks like this, that says, I belong here. And my badge will open that door. Or you go to the receptionist, you say, I'm here to visit. What that receptionist will do is take your driver's license, run it through an application that's called Raptor. It's effectively a nationwide sexual predator database. It will print a little sticky name tag that has your picture, your name, and your destination. And you put that on your shirt or your jacket or whatever. And it tells the school that you belong there. And then we activate a little button that gives you access to the campus. We refer to that as kind of the box. That reception area is the box. That's where we're trying to get. If you take that conversation then to Mr. Jones's school, Building Four, which is his reception area today, looks very much like Booker High School. You go into a door, you're greeted by a receptionist. There's a door that you can only open with a badge or you're buzzed in. And so we have visitor access control, except that the entire perimeter of the school is open. And even during the day, when School Avenue is closed to vehicular traffic, pedestrians, bicycles, motorcycles, motorized vehicles can get on the campus. And so as we work to getting to this place where all of our schools meet this standard of physical security, we're going to get there very quickly with one exception. And that exception is Sarasota High School. And that exception is because School Avenue in its current form allows people to just walk on and off that campus. And Mr. Jones is going to tell you, what I don't want to do is overplay this, that it's all about preventing the next Columbine. Because, in fact, the chair and I were talking about this earlier today. Unlikely, God forbid, but unlikely that something like that would happen. It's more the day-to-day things that happen on the ground at Sarasota High School that we're trying to prevent. So, we're going to ask David to share, excuse me, share some of those with you. I guess, as I put my parent hat on, I spent a career in the military. And so I moved my kids around a lot. And they went to school in foreign countries. And I can remember worrying about their safety and security when they would get on a bus. I guess personally, and I'll shut up after this, personally, I feel like we collectively have a moral obligation to do the things that are right by the safety and security of our kids. There is no such thing as perfect safety and security. You're never going to get there. But we have to make those decisions that we could say are reasonable and smart in the best interest of the safety of our children. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to simply paint a picture of not the Columbine situations, but what is my reality day-to-day? And more importantly, what's the reality of all of my students day-to-day? Because it isn't necessarily a Columbine. And I will say this, in, on April 20th, 1999, I was a teacher in Littleton, Colorado, when that went down. And don't think for a second that that didn't impact me profoundly. And I want to state that on the record. It did impact me. Because that changed my world as an educator forever. And it's changed the lens that I look at things. And I will say as a premise, before I give you some of the anecdotes, I believe that every single student has the right to feel safe at his or her school. I don't believe that learning is maximized when my kids are feeling anxious, feeling fearful, and not really knowing what's going to go on. And as Scott and Kathy have painted the picture, please understand, not one, not one of my students was born yet when Columbine happened. So, I can look back at the good old days. And I can remember how wonderful it was to be able to bike to school, to walk to school, to do all of these things with such freedom. But they've never known a world without this kind of catastrophe. But what does that translate into on a day-to-day basis? Let me begin with today. At 11:47 today, one of our transition periods, during any transition period, I have 500 students moving from the east side of campus to the west. And those 500 that have been on the west side, moving to the east. During that time, a bicyclist came ripping through there, didn't slow down too much, passed right through our kids. And I state that not as a catastrophe, but I do wonder something. Had one of my students been hit, where would the liability fall? How would we handle a situation like that? And I thank God every day that that hasn't been an issue yet. So, let me talk about some of the other anecdotes that I've just dealt with. And I've been back at Sarasota High School almost for two years now. And I'd like to share some of the things that I've experienced and my students have experienced. Hopefully, my students know less of it than I do. Because we've got a pretty darn good security team that's been able to prevent major things from happening. But we had a student who had recently been sent to us from Manatee County Schools. Now, when they move here, it's not our prerogative to say yes or no. We accept them as a student. Well, not being at school one day, he showed up with three other friends. Looked like older kids and put our security team on high alert. Turns out, as they intercepted the kids, that three of them were not students at all, had no business being there. And the one that was a student was found to be in possession of cocaine. Now, put yourselves in my role as principal. Here's three people coming on campus who aren't students. And the one who is a student has cocaine on him. And I want to ask you, how do you deal with that? What do you tell your kids when that situation happens? Another student of mine, and spoke with him even again today to seek his permission about this. He is currently a senior at my school. He was involved a year ago this past December. He was shot three times. To this day, he wears one of the bullets in his back under his skin. It's one that they can't safely remove. Now, move forward one year to just this past December. On the anniversary of that shooting, a young man shows up on our campus during the transition, walks on from School Avenue, blends in, gets into one of our buildings, and is seeking out this very student who had been shot. Now, again, thank you to the Sarasota Police Department, who's phenomenal. And thanks to our security aides, and I think we have the best in the district. All of these things have been prevented. But you see, with School Avenue open as it is, I can't possibly account for every one of these kids that's here on any given day. And it's as simple as, there are those students who might prefer to step off campus and go to Panera rather than listen to me teach math. That's hard to imagine. And there's other students that might come on at times other than when they're assigned to be on. So, let me give you two anecdotes that exemplify both of those. We had a young lady who had some cognitive disabilities. And this was back in about 2009, 2010, when I was an assistant principal at Sarasota High. Internet was emerging, and there was all sorts of hookup sites. She met a 40-year-old man online and was in love with him. She would leave School Avenue, go north two blocks, and meet up with this man until we were able to apprehend him. In terms of students being able to get on the campus instead of getting off, let me tell you another story that happened. We had a Facebook posting in the fall. The Facebook posting showed a picture of a gun. Now, the description that the student put with it wasn't very descriptive. It wasn't a specific threat or anything like that. But certainly, when that stuff happens, it puts me on high alert. So, I had my security team stationed the next day. We quickly found out what bus he rides, ready to intercept him. He wasn't on the bus. We have multiple, multiple access points. But we put where we thought they could be. Kid wasn't there first period. Kid wasn't there second period. Happened to call into his third-period class, and the teacher said, oh yeah, he's in here. Now, this student arrived. How? Because he, all he had to do was come through School Avenue. He didn't have to go through a single access point where I could account for him. So, there he was, and we were able to take care of that. Let me just say this, because I want to wrap up my remarks. This past fall, something happened at one of our sister schools, Riverview High School. A man, an angry man, was able to get on to the Riverview campus. And very appropriately, the parents, the citizens, the students were saying, how did this happen? How can this be? How did this person breach our campus and get on here? Now, kudos to our school board and to our security team. They dealt with it. They figured out what the vulnerability was so that that wouldn't happen again. But the ironic part for me, and part what makes me so passionate is, whereas we fixed the single-entry point, we give a 24/7 legal pathway for anyone to walk on my campus at any time. And we say, that's okay, kids. Don't worry about it. And we can say that 99.9% of the people who walk through there are well-intentioned. But not all of them are. And I've given you some anecdotes. It's the reality that I have to deal with every day. If nothing else, please understand the toll that this takes on me. There isn't a moment that I don't think about this. When I started here a year ago, August, the security team will tell you, within two days, I was making contact. How do we get this closed? So, I'll leave with the same remark. I believe that every one of my students is entitled to feel safe at their school. Thank you.
So, here we are this evening, asking for your assistance, city commissioners, as we look to prepare a safer Sarasota High School. To do that, we are presenting to you an inter-local agreement that I thank the partnership that I've gotten from Ryan Chapdellane, from Alex Davis Shaw, and the rest of your staff. We have worked really hard in what, probably three years, Ryan? It was one of the very first challenges I received when I started here four years ago. And it's taken us that long to get to an agreement that we can bring to you that says all staff has signed off on this agreement. And what it does is two things. First of all, it closes School Avenue to all users and all modes from the hours of 6:30 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon. That's two hours later than the current agreement. And it includes pedestrians, bicyclists, and anyone else who can get through the pedestrian gate. So, during those hours, School Avenue would be closed and not accessible to anybody but the students and those who belong on the campus because they've gone through the single-point of entry. point of entry. The other thing that the agreement does, it establishes and it recognizes the school district's right to ask for a full vacation of the roadway. It does not give us the full vacation of the roadway. It just says, "School District, we recognize that's something you are interested in, and we expect that you will do so." To that end, on Monday evening at 6:00 p.m., we will have our workshop that is required by the city at the auditorium at Sarasota High School to talk about the concerns the community has and the citizen and the community of the school and the community of the residents have about this vacation. We hope that it starts a discussion. We don't want this, the city requires us to have one meeting, we're having one meeting. It is not the first meeting. In fact, we already have a second meeting scheduled, and if I had my calendar in front of me, I'd tell you what the date is. But it's a Monday in June that we will host to continue this discussion. We have heard from the commissioners and from our school board members that you want us to come to a compromise. You want us to build a better school, school community for all people. We're going to continue that discussion, hopefully, till we get to a point that we can bring forward something in the vacation process that accomplishes that goal. So, we will have our first meeting on Monday evening at 6:00, and then we will continue the discussion, and hopefully, through the summer and into the fall, as we bring forward our application for the vacation process. So, those are the major differences. That's what we're here this evening to discuss. We, as a workshop, this is an opportunity for you all to talk about what we have presented to you as staff, and then would ask that the school board and the city commission separately bring this forward at a future meeting as quickly as possible, so that we can get these fences up in place before the start of our school year. I know that as a placeholder, it is on the school board's agenda for next Tuesday, the 15th, and then it will be on the city's meeting as soon as you can get it on. We ask that you come to some sort of agreement, that this agreement is worthy of our kids. And I, in closing, I just have one comment to say, many of our students are here to listen and hear your discussion, and many of them are here to speak. We ask you to listen to our kids. We ask you to understand the world that they live in, and the fear that they have is very different than ours. And I'm crying, because I had a discussion with my 10-year-old before this meeting, and choking up, because he said, "Mommy, somebody could just come on their campus." And I said, "Yes, Brendan, somebody could just come on their campus." And it's a very different place, and I ask them, I ask you to listen to them and understand their world, and try and vision the world through their lens, because it's not the lens that we had when I graduated in 1987. Thank you.
So, Mayor and Chair, that concludes any presentation. Ms. Chaplin, I don't know if you have anything to add, but again, I know you have a number of speakers, so we would not prolong our discussion on this side any further.
Can I ask a question?
I have a question. Shirley Brown with the school board. I have a question. On page 38 of the study, page 59 in our book, we're talking about repairing and replacing the sidewalks there to make the walking better, because I understand when we were talking before, some of them didn't, said that the walking on the other alternate sidewalks weren't as good as walking on school. And it also said you were going to provide charos along, that's a word I've never heard of.
Okay. So, once again, just to reiterate, there were three recommendations that have been made by our consultants, and the school board has agreed to all of these recommendations. The first is that we will look at and improve the sidewalk conditions along Tamasola, Shade, and Patton Street. And the second one is that we will put charos. And if you don't know what a charo is, I wish I had a picture, but I don't. So, I'm just going to ask you to think of any road that you've been on where you've seen a bicycle with two arrows on top of the bicycle in the lane. It is, that's telling the driver that they need to share the lane with a bicyclist. The bicyclist has the same right to that roadway as, as the driver does. So, that's what a charo is. And then finally, that we would evaluate Shade Avenue for further considerations, multimodal, multimodal path potentially there with ADA issues. So, those were the recommendations, along with the legalization, which we can't do. But we have agreed to do all that the, all that we need to do for the pedestrian and bicyclist improvements.
Thank you.
During some of the preliminary meetings that your staff, both staffs have had with us as members, there's been information that there were studies that was done in terms of alternatives to permanent closure or permanent vacation that related to possibilities with regard to underpass, overpass, and other alternatives. We were told that those, that those items were taken into account with regard to the studies that had been done, but that information has not been provided as a part of the materials that we've been asked to review for our subsequent meetings. When will that information be provided?
It will be in the staff report that will be provided when we apply for the complete vacation of the roadway. So, we're still evaluating those considerations, which is why we haven't yet provided that detail. But as soon as we put in the application, which will either be next week or the end of the month, so it'll be in the next few weeks, we will have that level of information for you. But we are working on that. We just, that was, that was a requirement for the full vacation of the roadway, not for this interlocal.
Are there not summaries that can be shared? Because we've got at least one community meeting that's coming up next week, and then we know that there will be a subsequent meeting. And as it relates to community input, those are questions that this commission is being asked, and we'd like to be able to provide some answers.
I think that there's some, I'm not sure if all of the assessment will be done, but we certainly can provide the information and answer questions the best of our abilities at that, at next week's meeting.
And to Mr. Chapdolane, with regard to staff, do you have any of that information? I know that the two staffs have been working closely together over the past three years. What information does the city staff have with regard to these concerns?
In terms of the underpass or overpass?
Or any other options that were considered? I don't know that those were the only ones, but that's what we've been told.
It's, the school, the school district has been researching that, and as Kathy mentioned, they'll have that summary in the next couple of weeks.
We could give, I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt the conversation, but as it relates to the overpass, because I think an underpass, an area with a water table about that deep, doesn't make any sense to start off with. Relative to an overpass, we have done some homework there. We could give you a summary of, from our perspective, why it is a practically not a solution. We could give you a summary of that, and we could probably do that by Monday.
Yeah, probably. I mean, we are, we are currently working towards putting the application in by Tuesday, so, yes, by Tuesday, that information would be definitely available, because it'll be in the staff report.
I also noticed that with regard, getting back to the language of the interlocal and the proposed agreement, there is no proposed termination date with regard to when this interlocal might expire, given that we know that we might be having a subsequent conversation as to vacation. Was that intentional, that there was no termination date that was included?
Yes, because we, because if there is no, if we don't go forward with a vacation, this agreement then would take place, and just like the 1997 agreement that currently is in place, this would go in perpetuity.
Thank you. Chair, Sigler.
Well, first, I wanted to start off in thanking the Mayor, Friedland Eddy, and the commissioners, and the city staff, and the school board staff. I know that this is an important topic for all of the constituents in which we serve. I know that much of those constituencies overlap, and it is an important issue. I think, I know there's been a lot of work, and this is, this conversation predates Parkland, as Med mentioned, and it really comes down to what is going to be, especially as a school board member looking at it from an access control standpoint, and risk mitigation is kind of what I do every day, so it is, it's an occupational hazard. And as soon as I saw the aerial view of Sarasota High when I became a board member, I realized the implications and exposures that exist. And so, what I hope to gain today, and again, I really appreciate the ability to meet, and also the waiver of the rules to allow for public comment, given that the fact that this is something that has high interest from the members of public. So, I wanted to thank the commission for that. But I do hope that we can find a resolution today, make sure that you get the answers that you have referenced today, for you to do your part, to answer the questions that your constituents have raised with you, and I brought those notes down. But do you want to walk away, hopefully, with some agreement and steps forward, as has been proposed? So, thank you.
Court member, Ms. Powell.
I don't have the information on if a student overpass or underpass, but when earlier discussions were made about that, I had somebody from the School Safety and Security Council call me, were very concerned, because you would never want to have pedestrian overpass where, over the school, because that, I mean, that would be like having, like a blind, I mean, if a shooter wanted to shoot, that's what they would do. They would go up there, they would have a, I don't want to scare the kids, but they'd have a clear view of, of the school campus. So, pedestrian overpass for the walkers, the pedestrians, not the students, would be clearly out of the question. I don't know if I discussed this with you, or you've had, or you've probably heard these same concerns, but I think that's something that we can share. It's totally, that would be total against all safety and security measures if we had a pedestrian overpass for the, the public to go over. If that helps clear up anything for you.
So, we have been asked, and just so, Mayor, we have been asked by your staff to evaluate some very specific alternatives, and if there are others, please let us know, and we will be able to evaluate these. But as, and Ryan, please help if I forget off the top of my head the ones you've asked us to evaluate, but we've been asked to evaluate the implications of a pedestrian overpass from the east side to the west side and vice versa to the campus, for students, right? A student overpass over School Avenue. We have been asked to evaluate a potential alternative route through the campus. We have been asked to evaluate the potential of having some sort of pass card or a way for residents to come to one side of the gate on either the north or the south, to be able to be escorted across the campus to the other side of a campus, on the either north or south, depending on what way they're traveling. We have been...
Those were the major ones.
Those were the major ones, okay. So, we've been, we've been asked to, so, we've been asked to evaluate the complete fencing of both sections of the, of the north camp, or the west campus and east campus, and then allowing for the opening of those gates during passing time, so that students would then cross over the roadway during, during passing time. So, those are the four that I, off the top of my head, we've been evaluating, we've been asked to evaluate. Were there any others, Ryan?
I can't think of any others.
And it's certainly after Monday evening, when we have our public workshop and whatever input we hear this evening, if there are other suggestions, we are willing to make those, make those evaluations with the understanding that, right now, those are the four we're evaluating in preparation for our staff report to be due on, on Tuesday. If there are additional ones that we hear either this evening or on Monday, we may need to add an addendum to the staff report, so.
Court member, Goodwin.
Well, I just have a question of Principal Jones. 4:30 in the afternoon is of concern to me. Is that enough time for our students? 6:30 in the morning till 4:30 in the afternoon? We have many students on that campus into the evenings for various different athletic drama and clubs and classes and other things that they're doing. So, is that enough time for us to be concerned with the security of Sarasota High School? 4:30?
In my professional opinion, absolutely not. I had four of our administrative assistants compiling data this week, just to determine how many after-school and evening events occurred just this one year, just this school year. These are all page after page after page after page. These are all events. It goes on and on and on. I don't even have a total count, because I haven't gone through it yet, but you can see it is probably 20 pages worth of events. These are events that, I mean, a lot of the kids that are in here are at my school every night till 9, 10 o'clock, engaged in activities. And I could provide a number of anecdotes of situations that have happened well after 4:30.
Well, that's one of the considerations that I have, is that we would look at the time and maybe make some considerations. I think we need to, you know, address the community. I think we need to make sure that the community understands the sidewalks, the ideas of what we are going to do, and what we consider to be hardening fence-wise and so forth. But I also think that we need to engage, very much like we engaged Sarasota High, Mr. Limpy, back in the days of the Charettes, when we had quite a, yes, exactly, when we had the wonderful Rudolph Building being renovated, and we're trying to conceptually talk to people about what we were doing and, and how this would, would, would come into play. And I think we, we really need to be concerned with not only what we're doing, but the time that's available in the interlocal, because I have great concerns. Our day does not start and stop at 4:30. And, you know, it, this is probably one of the real compelling reasons for the vacationing. But in this interlocal agreement, if this is all we have, if this is where we end up, I am very concerned about the time.
Court member Robinson.
Yeah, I echo Jane Goodwin's concern. I mean, for staff to say, "Absolutely not," there's no time limit on our responsibility to the students for safety. As long as those students are on campus, we have a responsibility to them. And so, if staff is saying, "Absolutely not," then me agreeing to 4:30, absolutely not.
Can I explain how we got to 4:30? We got to 4:30 based on when the interlocal, as it was being drafted, we did not yet have the traffic study complete. And so, the city engineer, Alex Davis Shaw, asked for a 4:30 time, because that is the time of PM peak hour. So, that was, that was where we came to the compromise of 4:30 because of the PM peak hour.
Court members, Iver.
I agree with Eric. 4:30 is, it's just not lo, I'm on your campus. I come to your plays, and that's an active campus at night. I mean, there's kids all over the place, so I don't know why we're going to settle for closing until 4:30. If we're working out this agenda right now, we ought to work out what we really need and what we really want, and make it one time, instead of coming back again and asking for the closure, because that's the bottom line where we are.
Court member, Ms. Powell.
You pointed out that, you know, people go on the campus to watch the plays and things like that, so we don't have to go through that single entry point at that time. I mean, after school hours, how do people, how do kids get on and off the campus if the single entry point isn't there? And how do parents get back on the campus to, to attend different things or pick up their kids? How do they do that after hours?
It's a wonderful question, and we have a number of gates that are built into this. Now, if it's an athletic event, I'll take a cheerleading practice. Those coaches have their access and their keys, and they're absolutely responsible for those students at that given time. So, there's an adult in charge that opens a gate, allows them in to have their practice, stays with them until the last one is picked up. As for plays and evening events, it's actually a very judicious application. So, the kids practice for months and months and months. The performance is four nights and one matinee. And during those times, you do. You have parking lots designated, this is where your traffic is coming, and it's well monitored. Great question.
We want to give the students and the public who sign up to speak an opportunity to do so. Thank you, members, for the presentation. Thank you. At this time, individuals who have signed up to speak will be called forward. We have five chairs, so you'll be called up in groups of five. Before you speak, if you'll just kindly just state your name, the following individuals, please come forward. Linda Kitch, Susan Ashby, Joanna Tomlinson, Michelle Hermy, and Cindy Spalding. Candy, my apologies. There is a pledge of public conduct that's on the back of the card, and we would respectfully ask that all speakers please adhere to that pledge. Ms. Kitch?
Hi, I'm Linda Kitch, 2160 Bay Street. I'm a neighbor. I'll try to do three minutes. A half a mile detour for pedestrians, one mile round trip, is significant for pedestrians...
A half a mile detour for pedestrians, one mile round trip, is significant for pedestrians. It isn't treated as significant in the report. The professional traffic analysis uses exactly four hours total of pedestrian counts. Two hours on one weekday, two hours on one Saturday, four hours total. That's so statistically insignificant as to render it meaningless. The traffic study pays nothing but lip service to the non-car value of School Avenue to the community. In June 2017, several neighborhood residents met informally with Principal David Jones, Kathy Eba, I think Shirley Brown was there, to explore some options. Someone brainstormed the possibility of creating a...
You'll pull it down towards you.
Yeah, creating alternative pedestrian paths. And this was, this was not an offer, this was a brainstorm, to the west of the fenced campus, totally outside the perimeter, in between the stadium and the new SMOA campus. And this very rough little map kind of shows where that would, where that would go. It offers a nearby alternative to 41 or to Shade, if you're not going that way, much shorter. It would require a small pedestrian bridge over the little drainage canal that empties into the headquarters of Hudson Bayou. This wasn't an offer, but I just want to bring this up. I like this idea. 41 is a horrible, not walkable street. There are sidewalks, you can walk it, it's functional, but if you have not done it, please take several walks down the sidewalk at 41 and see what it's like. Wow, I really edited myself today. This is my backyard. I'm a neighbor on the side of the, on the side of the playing fields to the north of campus, and I just don't want it to end up being like this. Oh, no. Okay. We concur. We concur.
Thank you. Susan Ashby.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, and School Board Members, thank you for allowing me to speak. Mr. Brown, is her mic on? Okay.
I am, oh, wow, there you go. I am many things. I am a neighborhood resident in the Alta Vista neighborhood. I am a parent. My daughter will be attending Sarasota High next year, and I am also a teacher at Sarasota High. And so I, I think that the safety of my current students, my daughter, myself, and everyone at Sarasota High is more important than my inconvenience in using School Avenue. I know that... Since I've lived in the neighborhood for about 17 years, twice, I have had random people show up in my house. Once I had a homeless person open up my front door because I forgot to lock it. Another time, I had someone break into my backyard, was trying to steal something out of my backyard. And so what did I do? I installed lights, I put locks on the gates, and I locked my door. To me, if there's an issue on campus and there's something we can do to prevent people from showing up that don't have permission to be there, we need to do it. So I think immediate termination of having the cut-through traffic in our campus during the day is a must, but I don't think it's enough to have it during the day. I think that it should be locked at night as well. I know, because I've walked at night before, that there are many pedestrians that are walking the neighborhoods, and I don't know if I trust all of them all the time. And I don't want to be in a situation where someone's able to get onto the campus at night and hide a weapon to retrieve at a later time. So again, I think the lives of our children outweigh any inconvenience that it might have on me as a neighborhood resident.
What's your name?
Thank you. Susan Ashby.
Michelle Hermy.
Hi, thank you for listening to us this evening. Unfortunately, times have changed, and we're in an environment where we have to be a little more cognizant of what's going on around us. Who would have thought you'd have to take off your shoes at the airport? But unfortunately, we're at that point, and we have to address that. As a community, as a society, we owe that obligation to our students and the families and the parents and the faculty that are at the school. So my, looking at, I don't think we can discount this, the Kimley Horn report and just throw it out the window. There are a lot of pertinent, there's a lot of pertinent information in there that applies to this specific situation. And just in looking at some of the pedestrian thoroughfare and the walking of these pedestrians, and part of the report showed there were 14 to 16 people traversing, you know, the campus. Well, we have 2,200 students at the school, and we really need to weigh what we can, what's convenient and what is not convenient. And although, you know, I drove around last night and just trying to look at the neighborhood and see what was there, it took, if you accidentally went down School Avenue when it was closed, and you actually had to go down Tama Sola, to Shade, to Haddon, it takes it probably an extra, you know, two minutes on your, to add to your schedule if you're trying to get to work and you forget to go down that street. I don't think it's too much of the community to ask to give two minutes of our time that could save our students' lives.
Ms. Tomlinson.
Mayor Eddie Uter Ziegler, Commissioners and Members, thank you so much for taking the time to discuss this matter. My name is Joanna Tomlinson, and I am a teacher at Sarasota High School, and I am also a product of Sarasota's school system. I was born and raised here, and I came back to my hometown, moved back here from Orlando, because I wanted my son to grow up with the same advantages that I did, to grow up in a town which prides itself on its beauty, safety, and sense of community. To those who would oppose the closing of School Avenue, especially the residents of Alta Vista, I understand that this is an inconvenience, and I understand that when you bought your home, you bought it with the knowledge that School Avenue would be accessible to you. This isn't a personal attack, but you are making the mistake of operating under the premise that the only people who use the pedestrian gate through our campus are good people who mean no harm to our students. The truth is, as we've heard tonight, there are students, or there are people who would do our students' harm. Despite their protestations to the word and its implications, teenagers are still children, and as such, they are deserving of our guidance and our protection. It is often said that it takes a village to raise a child. And so I ask all of you, what kind of village are we? Are you the one that I came back to for my son? Are we the sort who would argue that the safety of our children is too great an inconvenience, and if so, are we further willing to take responsibility for the potentially tragic consequences of that mentality? Or are we a community which recognizes a great, what we call a teachable moment in the world of education, and takes the opportunity to exemplify for our youth that one should do the right thing, even if it isn't the easy thing? What lessons would you like our students to learn here? And what message are you imparting to them about their value to this community? I implore our Commissioners to vote to close School Avenue to all pedestrian vehicle traffic, and preferably permanently. I promise you that our kids are worth every effort.
Ms. Spalding.
Good evening. My name is Candy Spalding. I'm a past president of Alta Vista Neighborhood Association. I was born and raised in Sarasota and lived on Nova Street for over 50 years. Many years ago, when Sarasota Middle School was moved, Sarasota High wanted to use the land span. I was on a committee. We met every month for a year, what, how it was going to look, what we wanted as a neighborhood, what we wanted Sarasota High to look like. School Avenue, first thing they wanted to do was close it. We're like, "No, why would we close it?" We didn't have any issues, and it was traffic was the only reason. We went for an overpass, they said, "No." They weren't going to do an overpass, they didn't want to do an underpass, cost too much money, they didn't want a part of it. So they, we agreed, "Okay, close it during school hours." I have no problem with it closed during school hours. My problem is, why would it have to be closed on the weekends, all summer long, holidays? I mean, kids aren't in school at those times. I do not feel that it needs to be closed permanently. I have no problem with it being closed during school hours to protect our children, but my question is, it's closed all the time anyway. Right now, this morning, I walked by there, 5:30 this morning it was closed, not 6:30, 5:30. All weekend long, it was closed. They close it whenever they want to, whether there's a function going on or not. And I'm sorry, yeah, two minutes is not a problem, but it's the idea that you get there, and why is it closed? It's not supposed to be, and it is anyway. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Mary Ann Bowie. James Portman. Larry Silvermence. Sean Caciola, forgive me. And Colin Schoen.
Mary Ann Bowie. Hi, thank you very much. I am president of the Arlington Park Neighborhood Association, which, as you know, is located on the other side of Bay of Vista. Currently, we have massive gridlock on Tuttle, we have massive gridlock on Bay of Vista, especially when school is coming, you know, is, when children are being picked up. Shade Avenue is where the students, high school students park, and Alta Vista's entrance typically goes into the Shade Avenue scenario. I believe, as an urban planner, as well as president of Arlington Park Neighborhood Association, that what we need here is a larger context for transportation and for traffic. I like the idea of an alternative pedestrian bicycle path between the museum and the high school. Since we've severed the old building from the Florida, from the Sarasota High School student, you know, from the Sarasota High School, what we need to do is consider access to the future museum, because we're going to be in real trouble if the only access to that museum for pedestrians and bicyclists is on US 41. So number one, we need the big picture content, concept. Alta Vista's grid, traffic grid, has already been broken and severed in several locations. You can go in and have staff show you which roads have already been closed, and that's an important thing for you to look at. School Avenue was named School Avenue because it took you from the schools to the other schools. And if you look at the path across Arlington Park, we've been trying to resurrect the 30-foot right-of-way along the School Avenue original path, so that we would be able to have bicycle and pedestrian traffic all the way from Brookside up to Sarasota High School. So, big picture, number one, consider your pedestrians, your bicyclists, we're trying to have walkable neighborhoods. It's fine with me if we close Arlington, if we close School Avenue during school hours. However, I think, I think it should be left, remained open. Is that my minute? Okay. One minute still? Okay. With School Avenue closed, if Sarasota, if School Avenue were to be closed, emergency vehicles could not access the campus to take care of any issues, whether those are health-related or not. Alta Vista doesn't need the grid broken anymore. Arlington Park doesn't need the grid broken anymore. So I'm definitely against a permanent street vacation, but there's no reason why the fences couldn't be constructed for each one, on each side of the road. And I just wanted to correct something. There was never, there was always a Shade Avenue and a School Avenue. It was never that all three schools existed in one block, it was just that they were, one was on one block, then the next was on the next block, in case anybody thought that there was ever a time when they weren't schools. So, okay. Thank you.
James Portman.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I'm the Vice President of the Alta Vista Neighborhood Association, and our official position is to advocate to keep the school open, but I'm speaking as myself, not necessarily representing the association. I just had some random thoughts. And my niece graduated from Sarasota High School. With all due respect, I think, you know, we, the one to keep the school open, the School Avenue open, you know, are concerned as much as anyone with the student's safety, and we take that seriously. I think we might just have a different understanding of what safety really means or what makes someone safe. So let's see, I've got some random thoughts here. I don't think closing the street is the only option. Like she said, I don't understand why we couldn't have a fence on either side with sentry points or a footpath that goes over. And the schools face three other streets on either side, so should we close those three streets too, so that all the streets around the school should be closed? If we're closing one, I don't understand why the other three can be open. I know there's a fence there, but then we could also put a fence, you know, on either side of School Avenue, have them go through a sentry or go over a footpath. We're exchanging the street from the general public's use, who uses the 24/7/365, to give it to the exclusive use of the school, which, again, has been noted, you know, in summers, a lot of evenings, a lot of weekends, they're not using it, so it's closed, and there's plenty of people that would like to drive down it, but they can't because it's closed. And, you know, we're all the public, the school is a neighbor just like the rest of us, we should all share the street and all have equal access to use it. I don't understand why the school gets press than everyone else, we pay taxes too. Let's see. Yeah. I don't, there's a difference between being safe and feeling safe, and the gentleman spoke about it, that students deserve to feel safe, and I believe that's true, but I think being safe is different than feeling safe, and feeling safe does not equal being safe, it doesn't make you safe. I don't know if closing the street off is really going to add that much to the safety. It might add to feeling safe, but I don't know if it really makes it any safer. If we're dealing with like a Parkland shooting kind of scenario where there's a madman with body armor and a machine gun, perhaps a truck, they're employing trucks now, they could drive over a fence, they could come in with body piercing armor, machine gun up anybody, if they're going to do something, there's nothing we can do to stop them.
One minute remains.
You know, we're just going through the motions of pretending that we're providing protection. It's not really a protection. Is it, you know, is it really realistic to think that a closed street could stop a crazed suicidal madman? I just don't think that's realistic. Do we want to have a closed or an open society? We're building a little mini prison to make the school like that with a fence around it, it's kind of a intimidating scenario. And are we going to be led by fear? Are we going to let fear dictate our policy? I don't, I don't think we should live that way in America. These, these school shootings are on the news precisely because they are such an isolated incident. They are extremely rare incidents, and that's why they're on the news, because they're exceptional. The overwhelming facts are that these things don't happen normally, and, you know, if somebody wants to get onto the campus, they're going to figure out a way to get onto the campus. I'm all for putting up a fence, I'm all for closing it during the school day, I just think that when the school's not using it, it should be available for the public to use, and that just seems fair. Thank you for your free time.
Mr. Silvermence.
Thank you. This is Larry Silvermence. I'm president of the Alta Vista Neighborhood Association, so honored Commissioners and honorable School Board members and honored community members. I would begin by giving the official position of the Alta Vista Neighborhood Association. We have repeatedly voted in a unanimous manner, as an association, unanimously voted to keep access open at all times to pedestrians and to vehicles whenever the students aren't in class. Okay, that's, that's what the association has voted. Now, I will speak as a community leader, not as an Alta Vista leader, or an Alta Vista Association representative. As a community leader, and as someone with a disability, and as someone who's invested in the community, I say this. I implore the Commission to vote sensibly and to think sensibly and come up with logical solutions. I'll just give you a few examples of how we're not thinking logically, and I'll reinforce what Jay said, which is, do we want feelings or do we want actuality? Okay, feelings. Let's stick with actuality. Actuality, many of the horrible things that have gone on in the past years have been committed by people who belong on the campus. Staff and students do atrocious things. Okay, if you're, if you have the students fenced in, how are they going to escape or take cover when they can't get out? And how are the security forces and the ambulances going to get in? So having, and then, do you, at which point is it safe enough? Okay? Unless you build a hermetically sealed bunker, like Jay said, there are ways of going over fences, under fences, and through fences, not just by people, but by projectiles and explosives. Okay? Are you going to bulletproof all the windows, et cetera, et cetera? And then the students are in a state of fear. Okay? And then, okay, you have a bunker. At which point does the bunker and the security zone ended? At the fence? Okay, somebody's going to say, "Well, no, it should be a block, or two blocks, or five." And we extend to, maybe we need a more civil society.
One minute remains.
Because after all, at no point can you really... Because after all, at, at, at no point can you really have, have a hermetic seal. And by the way, another thing that, that doesn't make sense is, if you want an overpass that's safe, you make a steel or concrete tube without windows and, and therefore people can't, can't easily be targeted or targets on, on an overpass. So that's another point of logic, you know? Just because we're talking about an overpass, that means something that's going to protect the people in both directions going across, okay? So there, there you go again, where you have to think full logic, okay? So to reiterate the logic that I implore you to, to see. Okay, do I have another sentence? Time is time. Thank you.
Sean Caciola.
I just want to thank you for your time and to listen to us and what we have to say. The fact of the matter is that closing School Avenue won't stop bad people from doing anything. And I agree with you. But feeling safe, we don't. And in all actuality, we aren't safe with that road open. Closing it isn't going to stop all hostile threats. It just won't. But it's a step in the right direction. And it's a good goal and a good path for students. We... We want... We don't just want to feel safe. We want to be safe. And closing School Avenue is, in my opinion, the best option for us. Because I've been there at night and I've seen people that walk by, people that are homeless, people that are possibly using drugs. And to allow traffic during the day, it's just a constant threat. And I, I don't think that, that should ever be an option for us students.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Showning.
Thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to speak here today. My name's Colin Showning. I'm currently a senior at Sarasota High. So first, I, I want to talk about the world that we currently live in. In the world today, I hear about shootings and threats and violence on what seems to be a daily basis. And this isn't in world countries, you know, in the middle of nowhere, but this is in our own country, in our own state, in our own town. And because of all of these things that I hear about, I do not feel safe on campus with school cabin open to pedestrians or anyone that has a whim of walking across. As common of an occurrence as it is that I hear about violence, I think to myself, how can we allow the students in a school to be so open to a world that is so open to violence? How can we let high schoolers of only 14 or 15 to experience their high school days always looking over their shoulders in fear of what might happen if they don't look back? And as one of those students myself, I don't feel safe on School Avenue. During my regular school day, I walk across School Avenue four times. And every time I walk across that street, regardless of what time it may be or how many kids are there, I always stop and look both left and right before I cross the street. Because even though there are gates at the end of the streets, I don't feel safe walking across the street that any individual could walk across as well. And because of this, I don't feel safe and I am not safe. As I cross the street, I always look left and right once more. But this time, I look not at the gates at the end, but to the security guards, who stand every day on both sides watching the students to make sure they are safe. Not because they just feel like standing there, but because they have to, because it is not safe to cross School Avenue. And I do not feel safe as a student to cross School Avenue. And finally, I reach the other side of the street and I continue walking until I reach my class. And after I've left School Avenue, I feel safe, right? But when I reach for the handle to enter my class, it's locked. And I realize once again that I'm not safe. Because even though I'm not on School Avenue anymore, someone could still walk on there and go somewhere else.
One minute remains.
Our campus cannot be safe unless we take steps to improve student safety. And closing School Avenue is the way that we can take a step right now to improve the student's safety. So as a student of Sarasota High, even though I only have about two weeks left because it's my senior year, I implore of you, please close School Avenue for me and every other student after me to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you all. Mike Lachey. Shannon Snyder. Matt Woodall. David Ginnard. Mike Lachey.
Good afternoon, commissioners, school board members. I'm a city resident and I'm, I also represent bicycle pedestrian advocates. I'd like to follow up briefly on the comments that the principal said here about 11:47 this afternoon, this morning. I was on School Avenue at, at 11:47. I tested out how, what it was like. And I can tell you that School Avenue is effectively closed to outsiders getting onto School Avenue, getting, getting on the school campus. I walked up the, up School Avenue before, when there was no class being changed over, there were two security guards and they were, they watched me closely as I came through. And then when they did have a school change over, there were no less than four, and actually six, security guards as, as classes being changed over. There was no way that an intruder could have gotten onto the school campus without being noticed and apprehended. As a matter of fact, I ended up in a conversation with Greg Rumpf from the school administration, just because I was walking through and taking pictures. So let me proceed to what I was going to say before that. It was not the city that cut a road through, through the high school. Instead, it was the school board, sometime before 1989, decided to put a high school on both sides of a public street. And as we can all see, every time we drive past the old high school on US 41, there's plenty of room for Sarasota High School to stay on the west side of School Avenue. But the school board decided otherwise. So it was the school board that created this situation, whatever it may be. Thus, if there are any problems that they have with it, it is their responsibility to fix it. But what does the school board propose? It proposes that the city and its residents pay a multimillion-dollar price by giving away School Avenue for free. And in return, the school board will take it. What reasons do they offer for this? Parkland. Let's be clear, Parkland has no real connection to School Avenue. At Parkland, Nicholas Cruz rented an Uber to take him and a satchel with a rifle inside to the school's main parking lot. This has nothing to do with School Avenue, where no motor vehicles are allowed during school hours. You could close School Avenue completely and would not affect the ability of someone else to do another Parkland at Sarasota High School. They mentioned safety generally, pledging that they cannot safely, pleading that they cannot safely manage the student crossing on School Avenue. But for over the last 20 years, even the school board reports no serious crimes or injuries from bicycle pedestrian access on School Avenue. But we all know this is not really about safety. It's about gaining land.
One minute remains.
In 1989, the school board published a master plan for Sarasota High School recommending closure of School Avenue. The school board is acting like the classic bad neighbor who has land on both sides of your land and then starts demanding you give your land to him. Certainly, they would like it, but the land does not belong to them. It belongs to the city taxpayers who built it and have maintained it for almost a century. If the school board is really concerned about safety at their crossing on School Avenue, they could increase their security at the current at-grade crossing, as the city commissioner recommended in 1994, or build an underpass or build an overpass. An underpass was estimated to cost only $770,000 by the school board's architect in 1996 and was considered doable. Another great aspect of an underpass and overpass would be that the city could reopen School Avenue to motor vehicle traffic at all times, thus completing the grid. But instead of proposing a win-win for the school board and the city, the school board is proposing a win-lose. I implore the city commission to please reject their proposal to take School Avenue away from pedestrians or cyclists or to vacate the street. Instead, please suggest that they focus on how they can improve safety at the School Avenue crossing. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Snyder.
Madam Mayor, city commissioners, school board members. First of all, a little history lesson. When the city commission, at the time when the school board announced that there were going to have this bifurcated campus, the city commission begged them not to do it and reconsider. They were told no. And subsequently, state statute was changed and actually cited what this particular instance is as one of the instances around the state of Florida that then required school boards to actually deal with their local school districts and their future capital plans. So as commissioners, you're not the bad guys tonight. This is about, I think, the sixth time they've asked for the road. This is the second time they've packed City Hall. And you should not be feeling like the bad guys in this deal at all. There does need to be some security changes from timing. Times have changed, there's some security changes. And I would like to compliment the staff at Sarasota High School. Their campus is difficult would be an understatement tactically, and I'm not going to get into it, but commissioners, you know where I come from. Tactically, it's a very difficult school. Far worse than most people really realize. But it doesn't have anything to do with the road. It really doesn't. Most of the situations you're going to rise into here is we probably need to change the hours and the, and the constriction of who can cross there during school hours. I understand that. The vacation, you're going to need that road in the future. And while there are no plans in the future, no one's discussing it, we don't know what the future is. When this started, we hadn't had Columbine. When this all started, there hadn't had 9/11. When this all started, there wasn't Parkland. And what happens is we really don't know what the future is. As a city, I would say work out some deal with the school board for security issues. But the vacation, I would remind you, there used to be a middle school there. Because of housing prices and relocation, there is not a middle school there today. There's not a need for it. We don't know what the student needs are going to be when the county's 2050 plan really kicks in. And that may not be till 10 or 15 or 20 years down the road. And I would say, hate to see the city commission give up a bargaining chip on whatever future development may or may not occur on that property. Let's secure the property right now, the first part of the interlocal agreement. Madam Mayor, you ask a good question. I would suggest an ever-five or six-year renewal at least. Make sure, make sure both boards, they all change.
One minute remains.
And make sure they come down to renew that agreement, even if it's at the convocation of governments. I would suggest that in the interlocal agreement. Pick a timeframe, even if it's 10 years. That way, everybody's got to look at the thing and make sure they understand what it is. But vacating that road, agreed with securing it, but actually legally vacating, we are going to need that. And if any of the city commissioners would like to, my phone number is available and I'll be more than happy to talk to you on another time because I know my time is limited.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayors and members of the commission and school board. Matt Woodall, 2620 Novus Place, Sarasota. I would first like to point out that a lot of us consider it a moral imperative that Superintendent Bowden and Chairman Ziegler of the board have a, have an obligation to guarantee the best possible experience for each and every pupil. That doesn't also, that doesn't just mean curriculum and instruction. That also means the extras that go along with that, the logistics, the transportation, the, the buildings and so forth. And while no one here, I think, really believes that closing School Avenue will be an end-all, it certainly will go a long way towards reducing the likelihood of a catastrophic event. And I think that is the goal here, reducing the likelihood and lusting the burden on the building administrators, Mr. Olympia and the team. I, I don't see that as unreasonable. I live on the west side of Alta Vista neighborhood. It will negatively impact me and my travels in, here around my home. But it's an inconvenience that I'm willing to accept. I would also like to point out that the alleged bad neighbor of our school district received more than 80% approval at precinct 215 in our recent school board referendum. This is indicating, I think, that we trust their judgment and we are trying to be good neighbors. We've heard mention of a unanimous vote from the neighborhood association. Let me share with you that that routinely means between six and eight people. A unanimous vote of the neighborhood association, what a crooked hustle, okay? This is a group of people that nobody wants to be around anymore that come up with these kooky ideas that are completely outdated, unrealistic and unreasonable. And I'll just, I'll just, I'll just say there. And the attendance of these meetings, I wish not to be interrupted, mayor, the, the attendance of these meetings suggests everything that I have stated is, is fact. Now, let's get to this pedestrian and vehicle traffic issue, okay? We're looking at 42.57 of the registered voters in our area are age 65 and over. Now, while that is not, it is not the rule that no one over 65 will be on the bicycle or be out walking around in the 90-degree heat with 80% humidity at age 80.
One minute remains.
I think it is likely that, you know, this pedestrian traffic and this, you know, these bicyclers, it just doesn't, that dog won't hunt, not in that area. There are certain other areas, well, it may be plausible, but it's, it's not there. So quickly, to quickly address the overpass idea, I can't think of a worse idea for, you know, a gun tower. You'd have nearly unobstructed line of sight across most of the campus. It would be a recipe for disaster. This underpass thing, a tunnel of horrors probably, and a nightmare for the police department. I would love to see the SEPTED, Crown Prevention Through Environmental Design Analysis, on something like that. So, you know, I, Shannon Snyder has a lot more experience and, and, you know, he's, I take exception with what, I mean, I understand with what he says and it might be better to not vacate but to close. Certainly, I feel like that there should not be, but any access, regardless, complete barrier from any access during school hours and during school activities.
Time.
Thank you.
What's your name, sir?
David, uh, David Ginnard.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Ginnard.
All right, I'm David Ginnard, city resident. But probably doesn't make much difference if the crowd behind me because I'm north of the Futebol Dixon line. But I was just going to say, first off, it wasn't a pedestrian who walked into campus and tickled a student. It was a school SRO. That's just saying, go. Anyways, last night, one of the commissioners, Mr. Brody, made an excellent point in talking, you know, referring to, you know, the crybabies in Hyde Park were throwing a fit. And he made an excellent point as far as, this is a city. You know, they knew it's a through street. You know, the school board knew, you know, when they made their poor plans for the extension, they knew that it was a through street. In fact, what? Caroline Zucker in 1996 said that originally the plans were to go out in the county. And then they, you know, changed it back. So they knew. So they could have had that cul-de-sac out in the county, but, you know, they chose, you know, making a poorly planned campus. And one thing, you know, let's not, you know, I'm not mad that it took so long for, you know, for Booker High to get crossing guards, but, but okay, they, you know, they changed Orange Avenue. So most of it's gated, but, you know. I was riding my bike along 32nd and there was a big wide opening for me to get on campus and, you know, cause some havoc by, you know, throwing some funny insults at people. But, uh, so even, you know, so yeah, you could, you know, close it down, but there's still going to be vulnerabilities. And I actually, you know, I bike, I bike along School Avenue. Never seen, uh, never seen anybody. And I, many times I've biked where the opening is, seen kids cross. And, you know, no, you know, no security to protect me from, you know, making fun of kids. But, you know, I keep riding my bike along. Don't do that. But, uh, so I, I just feel this, you know, put a, put a wall against it and do an overpass and, you know, put a fence over it so like, you know, some young kid doesn't jump off it. But other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Jerry Morgan.
I'm sorry. I'll do my best. Hello, my name is Jerry Morgan and I am a recent, in the last year transplant from Pennsylvania where we have self-contained schools. So this is a new experience. I first want to thank the principal for the messages about attending this meeting. Since if it were not for that, I would not be here. And I don't have any proposals. However, I would like to speak to the spirit with which I think it's important to approach this problem. And I think we owe it to ourselves and to our children and the next generation to model for them, to be proactive rather than reactive and to underscore the importance of the community and to be respectful of one another and to look at how we can make ourselves and our children and our teachers safe enough. And it seems common sense to me to have a self- And it seems common sense to me to have a self-contained school with a perimeter, okay? So, that, I think that it's common sense. So, I think it's important to think about how we can make our children and respect our teachers and administrators and how to make them safe enough, and also how to teach them about community. Because the way the adults in this handle it is modeling for our children how to resolve conflict. Community, community, community. The people who are shooting are disenfranchised community members, whether they are part of the general community or whether they are part of the school community. So, I think it's important to reach out to the children who feel disenfranchised so they are not using guns to try to solve their problems. And I think it's really important to be respectful of everyone here, people who have lived in the community for years and, you know, so, and to discern the difference between addressing the issues of making our children and our children's teachers and faculty safe enough.
One minute remains.
And then urban planning on how to solve the traffic issue. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a point of, I guess, information. We are now at a point where we've received all the comments as it relates to the interlocal agreement itself. We do have comments that have been raised under citizens' input, some of which include closure of School Avenue, some of which include other items. Two ways I think we can do it. One, if this board needs a break, we can take a break at this point and go into the next topic. The other is, is that we had also asked for the vocational technical program to be addressed, and I don't see how that's going to happen in the last half an hour, since this was noticed from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, I would respectfully ask that our boards agree, and I think that we have off the record to meet again so that we can continue the conversation, but to make sure that we get to the rest of the community that has asked to speak. So, first question, Mrs. Nadelini.
Mayor, those are all for this particular item.
Okay.
The citizens' input, I still have those.
Okay, all right. So, that's all the more reason why I think we need to meet again, if we are, have consensus to do so. But if there is a need for a break, we can do it or we can keep moving. Are we good? Okay. All right. The following individuals, please come forward. Joyce Garcia, and forgive me if I mispronounce your last name. Jason Richards. Alana Hodge. Emma Hutchinson. Mary Margaret Steber.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Govars. I am a school board employee, not for Sarasota High, but for Gocio Elementary School. I'm also a parent, and that's why I'm here today. I have two beautiful girls who attend Sarasota High School and walk across Sarasota School Avenue every day in transition in class. I'm grossly aware of the safety and security that we're doing now at each school. As we sit here this evening, I'm hearing concerns about time, convenience, backyard view. I ask you, would those words come out of your mouth as you were telling me that my child was shot from an overpass that gives them complete access, as a blind does when you're hunting? I did not prepare anything today. I simply came to support. I do feel that the road is accessible. My daughter this evening, who is not here, one is, told me that last year she had a person on a bicycle ride through School Avenue as she was transitioning, and she, she was almost hit and had to jump out of the way. That wouldn't hurt her. That would hurt her, but that would not end her, end her life, end her future. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about future. As I've worked through the school system since 2006, I've noticed changes. When my girls were young, we would go to the school that we lived near and play on the playgrounds. You can't do that, because now our heightened security and safety awareness says, let's put some fences around that school campus, so even the neighborhoods can't go and play on those playgrounds. But it's because of the events that happened in history, and we learn from those events. It is our responsibility as parents, as leaders, as school board employees, as people of this, this state and this town, to take the responsibility for our students, for our future.
One minute remains.
I understand that these people who have lived here for a very long time want to be able to walk. There are many other areas that they can walk. These students just want to walk from class to class. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Richards.
Madam Mayor, Madam Chairman, members of the commission and the school board, thank you for the time and opportunity this evening. As a father of two girls who currently attend Sarasota High School, I have a very vested interest in the safety of my daughters and of the campus in general. I think we know that in this day and age, it's much different than where we grew up, and it's just hard for us to get our hands on sometimes. And as you know, raising teenagers, it's difficult. It's, I have an analogy of herding cats at night in the woods. So, anything we can do to help them focus would be very beneficial. And I look at school safety in two ways, is the hard physical safety of the campus and the psychological safety of children. Mr. Jones said it clearly, I think it's beneficial if we can put them in the best environment to learn, and what can we do as educators, as adults, as commission members to do that for them? I have two anecdotes, both from my children, unfortunately, and both from this year. My oldest daughter, while crossing campus on School Avenue, not during transition time, so a time of less traffic, encountered someone riding a bicycle, a shirtless person, no shoes, most of their worldly possessions on the bicycle with them. Fortunately, it was just an encounter, nothing more. Was it necessary? Perhaps not. And more sadly, I know, try to keep this together, my youngest daughter, after the Parkland Douglas episode, texted my wife and I during a fire alarm on the campus. When the alarm went off, none of the students moved. No one wanted to leave the classroom. That's a horrific thought that I would never have thought of growing up in school. They'd rather stay inside than go outside. So, while, again, this is not a cure-all, it's not a panacea by any means, it is clearly a first step in doing all we can, being physically responsible and for our children as well, to try to protect the campus and increase the security and give them the best place to learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
City leaders and school board officials, thank you for allowing me time to speak. My name is Elena Hodge. As a former student and athlete at Sarasota High to a now teacher and coach, just six years later, I have a great concern for my students and my athletes, my kids. I was a freshman in college during Sandy Hook. I was a first-year teacher during Stoneman Douglas. The reality is that everything has changed in the short time since I was at Sarasota High School. Safety is no longer guaranteed for these students. An open campus is not an option anymore. We're not eliminating any routes to cross streets in the neighborhood. We can still get emergency vehicles where they need to be. There's been ambulances in the parking lot this year for medical emergencies, and I've witnessed it out my window. Tonight is merely a small Band-Aid for the big issue. We have students on our campus almost every night until 10:00 p.m., and especially during the summer with our athletes. Permanent closure is truly the only option. I wanted to give you all an example of the fear that these students truly have. During what I'm assuming is the same routine monthly fire drill that we had, one of my sweet students looked at me straight in the eyes and said, "Are you sure we're okay to go outside right now?", as I'm trying to get them out and get my safety procedure folder under the door with the green sign that we're good to go. And I looked at him, and I said, "Absolutely, we're fine." Did I know? No, but I know what I'm trained to do, and that's to get them out if we think there's a fire, knowing it's a drill. They weren't worried about this fire. They're worried that there's an unwelcome person standing on the other side of my classroom door. I ask you all to look at the faces in front of you and all around you and question if adding 30 seconds to a minute worth of commute is worth the safety of all of these kids and the students and the teachers and all of the staff that's there with them every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Emma Hutchinson, a cheerleader at Sarasota High School. It's upsetting that this is even being discussed, but there are students whose safe zone is at school. At home, they are unsafe, and they come to school to feel protected in a comfortable environment. As cheerleaders, we are at school all year round. During the, during the summer, we have practices almost daily, and it is in our best interest that we feel safe during these times. We have access points for emergency vehicles, and we don't have to get rid of gates for that. But what can you, as board members, do for us as students to help us feel safe during and after school hours, and not just by getting rid of School Avenue? And I'd like to say that our state of fear isn't changed because someone mentions a shooting. We are already scared.
Thank you. Mary?
Hi, I'm Mary Margaret Steber, student and cheerleader at Sarasota High. I go to school to be able to learn in a safe environment, but when I'm changing classes or even sitting in class and can see outside, and I see someone who I don't know who they are or what their actions are, makes me feel unsafe as a student. I can remember numerous amounts of times that people walk on School Avenue with things such as bags, animals, and strollers all throughout our school day and even after. As a student, I would hope that me and my fellow students' safety would be more important than a minor inconvenience to pedestrians and bicyclists. As for during the summer, I know that I have practices on campus as well as countless other sports and activities, so it'd be in my best interest and others to have the school closed during those times to feel safer. Thank you.
Austin Dunk. Virginia Haley.
It's actually very uplifting to hear all these kids with such passion. It's also very interesting to me, because as an adult, I don't feel fear very often, and I sense real anxiety. Anyway, my name is Martin Hyde. Two of my four sons attended Sarasota High, so the question of its security is important to me, as I'm sure it is to everyone. We should note that we're talking about the potential closure of School Avenue, here with the emphasis on school. My point being that the high school has been at this location since 1926, which I contend predates most of us here tonight. Before 9/11, it was possible to turn up at an airport a few minutes before a flight and still make the plane. But since 9/11, we all know, as everybody has said tonight, things have changed dramatically and forever, because we never want to see planes being used as human missiles on our country again. On 2/14, things changed for Floridians with the tragedy at Marjory Stonem Douglas High School. Every parent, and I'm sure every citizen with or without kids, should want to do whatever we can to make sure such an event never happens here again. It's not generally possible to find simple and perfect solutions for complex problems. But one thing that we can do now that will help is to secure the perimeter of our high school. I've heard people talk about the potential detour, if School Avenue is closed, being as much as eight tenths of a mile to get to certain places, such as polling stations or drugstores from their homes. I'm sure if these people were asked the question of whether their inconvenience is worth the risk of a single life, they'd say unequivocally no, because there can't be anyone who'd be that self-involved. There is no way to discern from looking at a distance whether one person is or is not a danger, which is why the only security option here is no unauthorized pedestrians or cyclists within the perimeter.
One minute remains.
It is unfortunate for those that live in this area, but the reality is that things have changed, and they'll just have to accept those changes as we have airports and large-scale public events. As ever, there is a second option for those that remain unhappy, which is the same as those that choose to live near an airport and then complain about aircraft noise, which is to move elsewhere. 2/14 was our 9/11 as it relates to school security, meaning the personal comfort and freedoms of a few will have to be sacrificed for the many, and that is just how it is.
Austin Dunk. I'm a teacher at Sarasota High School, been there for 13 years. For the last eight years, my classroom has faced School Avenue. You know, I've heard a lot of emotional appeals tonight, and you should be able, as intelligent individuals, sort through those very easily. I really need to underscore what Mr. Jones, Mr. Limpy said about this being a daily distraction, daily occurrence of people coming on campus. You know, I just happen to see movement out of the corner of your eye. There's students continually leaving during the day, trying to sneak out, people arriving during the day, as I said, people are meeting clandestine relationships, things like that. I've had, I've seen people drop packages off on campus, I've seen things exchanged on campus. You know, what is occurring here is something that's very, very easily stopped and very efficiently as well, by simply blocking that road off. I understand that, you know, Alta Vista residents would like that access. For me, it's a 10-minute extra commute. As they've, actually, the road's been closed for the past, what, two or three weeks to replace the water main. It's a 10-minute extra commute for me to go home, and I'm gladly willing to sacrifice that in order to more effectively control who comes on campus, who leaves campus, what actual material comes on our campus, like the cocaine incident Mr. Jones spoke about. You know, for me, seeing this, this is something that occurs constantly, and unfortunately, the four-hour traffic study didn't include that. And as you know, from people in the audience members, they're very, very easily able to walk on campus. So, currently, our security staff per, you know, square foot or per acre, since we're so large, is minimal. I mean, it's, to have six people there leaves other areas vulnerable, or potentially vulnerable, other areas with insufficient security, in my opinion, and I think the school board would agree. The emergency vehicle issue is a non-issue, the cafeteria can have deliveries. We're not talking about building a berm here, it's more of a gate that can be opened and closed. As far as the time change, there's a substantial amount of students there on campus past 4:30, and drama is there, usually late-night practicing, football practicing, baseball, cheerleaders. It makes no sense to have that 4:30 as an arbitrary cutoff. I'd suggest you consider extending that past that time. Again, I want to keep this short. Thank you for entertaining all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Chair. Virginia Haley. I'm a proud resident of Alta Vista neighborhood and a mother of a Sarasota High School graduate. And I just ask myself, how would we feel if someone walked on that campus and hurt one of our children? And I agree with those who say this is not a feel-safe, but I think it's a logical, easy step. I have, I have to admit, ridden my bike during the school day across, along school, and our fine students often don't pay attention when they're crossing that street, and you are taking your life in your hands. But it's, it is not a safe situation, and I think it is an easy step we can take. I hear the ping of the softball bats from my house, and I know how late those games go, so I also agree that 4:30 is an arbitrary time that will not protect them. Finally, I was present at the Alta Vista Neighborhood Association. I think there actually were 10 of us there. The school staff made an excellent presentation at the time, just what we're discussing tonight, closing that pedestrian and bicycle access. And the Neighborhood Association voted in favor of that move. Then, an unnoticed meeting for the next month brought in some outsiders to make some of the other things you've heard and change their vote. But it is important to know, it hasn't always been unanimous, they haven't been well attended, so you are hearing from multiple voices in the neighborhood. Thank you.
We are through our first step? Yes.
Madam Mayor, Madam Chair, I don't know if our staff has any more information they would like to share. If not, we'll just, you know, open the discussion for, you know, for the board members and the city commissioners.
Madam Chair, we, one clarification, there was discussion about whether or not vehicles would be allowed through, on, on campus. Our intent for the long term of the campus is just for, just, is just gates. We are in the process of working with our consultants, engineering consultants, to identify and establish easements under that roadway. So, there is no possibility for us to put long-term buildings on top of School Avenue. It has to remain open so that the water main lines, the communication lines, the gas main lines, and other utilities that run under School Avenue... the external intruders of a parkland level, God forbid, is a, is a lower probability but has a high maximum detrimental impact. It is a regular activity that we are responsible for the students as soon as they're dropped off up until dismissal, and so any way that we can work together as a community to ensure that safety is really our goal. I know that you had mentioned, quite frankly, there's a timeline that's pretty tight here in order to maximize the opportunity. I did want to get a clarification if, to avoid a lot of back and forths, given that an interlocal agreement is, in fact, a legal document, and so wanting to avoid having drafts going back and forth, if there was some recommendations as to what the extension of that time would be so that on our board meeting on the 15th, to adopt such and bring it back to you for revision, then I understand the full vacation process is, in fact, a longer process, but I wanted to see if other board members or if members of staff had identified the timeframe from an extension, what would be potentially proposed?
As you heard before, I'm not interested in a time to close the street. I think we should vacate, the streets should be vacated, and we shouldn't have to go now and close it till 6:00 and then come back another couple of months and have another hearing and take another couple of months before we change the motion.
I believe legally, there's a two-step process, that we have to go through that, so it's step one for the interlocal agreement, and then in the event of it's a vacation, that's a, it's a longer period of process that would involve the commission at that point, so.
And they were separately noticed, what was noticed for discussion tonight was just the interlocal agreement as it pertains to these terms, with the understanding that there would be a subsequent conversation.
Right, it's, unfortunately, board members, we, or Zucker, we cannot adopt a vacation through an interlocal, that's just not legal, so it has to be this way. If, and the only alternative for you would be that we would just go to the vacation and we would go through the vacation process without an interlocal. The reason that staff has asked for this interim step of the interlocal is it allows for us to put the gates up during the summertime and allow for that closure to happen before these kids enter, because the vacation process will take longer.
I appreciate your comments, but I also heard, somebody asked me, is that timing good? Would you like that timing? Or what timing would you like? And I would like it closed 24 hours. So you asked me the question, I gave you the answer, you didn't like it, but that's my answer.
Nice, ma'am.
I've heard several people say that 4:30 wasn't really a good time, it was just kind of an arbitrary time that came up to extend it to, what time would you be looking for?
I think that you asked that question.
I'd like to hear what David Jones says.
10 o'clock? David?
I guess my point, I want to avoid a lot of back and forth if we're going to be so, and if it's a 24-hour period, I mean, that's what we're talking about, but I want a clarification on what that would be.
For the interlocal agreement, the time that I would be advocating for the closure would be 10:00 PM. When you look at the events, and again, documented data of when most of those things are done and most of the students have cleared, there are nights that it goes beyond that, but I think it's reasonable to say that 10:00 would be our ideal.
Mr. Jones, is it 10:00 PM Monday through Friday, or is it 10:00 PM when school's in session? And does school in session mean schools, classes in session, or when activities are happening on the campus?
I would prefer to analyze the data with you more, if that's okay, because there are a number of weekend events. Typically, those don't go until 10:00 on the weekends. There are some times, I mean, for example, our plays, things like that, do go on Saturdays. So I guess rather than making up something off the top of my head, I'd prefer to get back with you on that for those other dates.
And I'm not trying to be facetious, I just want to make sure that for this first stage, both of our boards are discussing the same terms. Exactly. Board member?
When we're looking at closing it whenever students are on campus, I think you need to stay here. When we have games and we have plays, we also allow people to come onto the campus without going through the raptor. So why then do we have to have the street closed at the same time, if in fact, people can come on the campus anyway?
That's actually one of the more dangerous times, is when those plays, those baseball games and whatnot occur, because we have three main parking lot areas. We have a parking lot off of Bay of Vista, we have one off of Tammy Solah, and we have one off of Shade. For example, when our musical was just performing and we were in baseball playoffs, you had to use all three lots, which means pedestrians were continually crossing over School Avenue, and that's when it's dark. And unfortunately, we've actually trained our kids inadvertently not to look right and left, because they are crossing that avenue at any point. We do have some flashing lights now, but a lot of times, more often than not, if you watch the body language, it's looking down at something as they're traversing that.
And I'm sure the parents or whoever, yeah, so it's the safety of people crossing School Avenue from one area of the campus to the other for the parking lots that we're concerned about, not some bad person coming on, because...
Right, and we have to be very specific, I mean, we talk about gate management, whenever we have multiple events or a single event, which gates are going to be open, which parking lots are we prioritizing, and what is going to be the access point for that?
And are those things that can be done in the in-between stage of where we are with regard to possible closure and school hardening? Because we're in this in-between phases, I know you are acutely aware, but there's going to be some changes, and I know that internally, you know, for security reasons, those things can't be discussed in public, but I mean, what we're trying to have an understanding is, you know, what are the security measures that are in place that protect students from traffic concerns with regard to being hit by cars versus ingress and egress, back and forth from east and west side of the campus, versus access to the campus from School Avenue versus pedestrian access? And so just to get a better idea as to who is our audience for purposes of this interlocal versus who is the audience for the purposes of proposed vacation? And those are things that, you know, I just have questions about, and I know that those are things that our boards will likely discuss as we determine what language is appropriate for this interlocal agreement and what language should come in a subsequent conversation with regard to an application for vacation. So whoever can help me answer those questions.
The planning, the planning.
Mr. Chapdaling, or Ryan?
So if we understood the question correctly, and we were quite honestly trying to talk and listen at the same time, the, it seems to be the question is to what hours for this interlocal would we be comfortable? We think that asking for 10 o'clock, so a 6:30 open, a 10:00 PM closure during days that school is in session, so that does not include the weekends, it would not include any time that the kids are on vacation or breaks or things like that, so we're talking about just days that schools are in session, for this interim step would suffice, and then we can take care of and better study and analyze the weekend involvement and the rest of it as part of the vacation process.
Of 6:30 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, on days in which school is in session?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that Ryan?
I think that's obviously going to be a policy decision, I don't know if our city engineer wants to weigh in on it or not, but certainly it's a safety issue that, and that's why we're here before you this evening.
Commissioner Brody?
I'll weigh in on it. I do agree that we should close School Avenue, period, whether it's the vacation or the interlocal agreement, but I also have a concern for getting it done quickly. This really should have been done, you know, weeks ago, if not months ago, if not years ago. So if it means taking longer to get this done, I don't want to mess around with the interlocal agreement. If we can close School Avenue to the end of the school year, then we'll deal with it in the summer, and we'll deal with the vacation in the summer, which I am all for. Couple of points I want to make, you know, it was mentioned that this seems like common sense. This is so obvious in this day and age that we need to secure and harden Sarasota High School. That is something that has changed in the last 20 years, that is so obvious, it is slapping us in the face at this point, and we see it every day on the news, and even the stuff that we don't see on the news. For every one of those mass shootings that you see on the news, it's hundreds of thousands of events, like the principal just described, that happened all across this country that don't make the paper, that don't make the news, but that puts students' lives in danger. Ms. Ashby also said a phrase that I really like, that this is about convenience versus safety, and that's what we do up here, we balance competing issues, convenience versus safety. When you look at the import of protecting our students, which are, for all intents and purposes, wards of the state during the day, the government is responsible for these students while they're on Sarasota High's campus. There is really no option for us. When you look at that and you balance those two, the safety of the students is paramount, and I want to address a couple of things that were said that I just think are obvious. One, first of all, School Avenue terminates at Bay of Vista. This is not a grid street, it's not a major street, it ends about 50 feet after we're talking about vacating it. It's not hard for people to drive around Hatton and go onto Shade Avenue, it's not hard for people to bike around Hatton and go to Shade Avenue, and it's really not hard for people to walk around Hatton and go to Shade Avenue. Once we close the street, it will be like it never existed, it will be a natural part of our grid. I spent a lot of time on Booker High's campus, and I think that is one of the best things with the design and the security of that campus, is how enclosed it is, it creates a great courtyard for the students, and I don't want to discount the student experience, which is something that we should be thinking about, an overpass, an underpass, I mean, keep in mind that we have students with disabilities that are navigating this day in and day out, and that the students that are crossing this street are the primary pedestrians that use this area. So that, so, one point I want to make in closing is that our interests are not competing. We are different boards, but we are part of this community and this government. We do not have competing interests, it's not the city versus the school board. We should all be working towards safer schools, a better community, and in this case, the safety of the students clearly outweighs convenience of pedestrians. I am in full support of getting the interlocal agreement signed, cutting off the open campus, and moving towards a vacation.
Mr. Fournier?
With regard to notice, one of the things that we had done as two boards was to say that because this was a workshop session, that action would not be taken, but that we would both notice this item for our respective agendas for the next-agenda meeting. Our next-agenda meeting is May 21st, I want to confirm that this item is on that agenda so that we can take action at the next available time, I just want to place it on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, and just a way of clarification for that exact reason, our, this particular ILA is on our May 15th agenda, and because to not slow any of the process down, that just given the current language, which says 6:30 to 4:30, that the option would be to amend it at the board meeting to the 10:00 time, which then would be sent over to you guys for review.
I just want to reiterate also that, you know, Sarasota High School wants to be a good neighbor, and Sarasota High School and the school board have been a good neighbor for a long time. I mean, Sarasota High School is part and parcel of this community. I know, I remember all of the hews and cries when we were talking about knocking down the old Sarasota High, and we had many city commissioners come to us also, wanting to keep that building, and they want us to, wanted to keep this campus in Sarasota, I mean, so we want to work, we've got, we've got a lot of plans, what we want to do there, I mean, we're redoing the Sarasota Sailor Circus now, putting air conditioning in there. We want the community to come in and use that, and the, when the art museum opens in November, or I don't know if it's November, it's supposed to be the fall of 2019, we want the community to be a part of that. We want to make this neighborhood walkable, we want to do everything we can to make it more accessible, but we have to secure the perimeter, not for that outside maybe mad guy shooting, but on those day-to-day issues, when somebody might bring in illicit drugs to the campus, or somebody might slip off the campus and meet with somebody else, or even just walk across the street to Banera Bread and get hit by a car, we're responsible, we're liable for those children. We need to keep them on the campus, and to think that we have to have so many security guards all over our campus at all hours, it's difficult, and sometimes something comes up. And just keep in mind, it's not just the shooter, it's the day-to-day activity on that campus that we're worried about, and Sarasota High wants to be a good neighbor, and we want to make that campus better, improve it, and we want to open it up for the community at times, we'll welcome you on the campus, you know, we want you there at the games, we want you there at the plays, we want to have an open community with you all. So please, don't shut us out. You know, we want to have that open communication, and there'll be times when it's appropriate for you to be on our campus, and we want you there at those times.
I'd also like for there to be some language that allows an internal review of this ILA, and I asked a question as to whether or not there was a termination period or whether there was a review period. I think that that's appropriate, that prevents us from having to resort to the last resort of scheduling a joint meeting to review a document, if there are timeframes that are built in in terms of an annual or whatever the timeframe is for a review, one because the community is changing, one because there may be more need for footprint, and one because we may need to do something different, and so this builds in an evaluation period. So I would ask that that be included. I also have some concerns about, I know that there is the intent to move forward with the vacation process, I don't believe that that language needs to be built into the interlocal because it's a separate application, we know we're going to have that discussion, but by including the language in here, it makes the impression that one assumes the other when they're two separate conversations, and so I would caution against including the language. And I also have questions with regard to the ADR process being included in this document as it relates to the interlocal, because those are things that go more toward the vacation process as opposed to the interlocal. I agree that we've got to do hardening, we've got to do everything that we can right now to get this ball started, but I also want to make sure that we don't build in language that gets us in trouble in the future, and we're going to have a subsequent conversation. So those would be my recommendations, if the staffs could look at those as they are bringing information back to us in terms of what a final draft might look like for our respective meetings that are coming forward. Chair Board, Ms. Zucker?
Just a point of clarification, the school board is not paying for any of the renovation at Sarasota Circus. I don't want it to get out there that the school board is spending taxpayer money to help the circus. And unfortunately, to some people's comments, this is a different time we're living in. It is not the way it used to be, and it's sad that it isn't, but that's the reality of life, it is what it is, and we have to get with the times in order to make sure our kids are safe, and that's the bottom line.
Again, and again, just to, and I noted your comments, and I believe our members of staff are probably addressing it, again, to avoid any kind of further delay, the items that you addressed, as far as I think it was item B on page nine, which is regarding the second step to immediately initiate the process for permanent vacation of School Avenue. I know that, I believe staff had changed it from a legal standpoint to allow for the vacation process to occur, but in an effort to be clearly transparent on the intention that it wasn't a curveball being thrown to, in the effort of good collaboration, I believe that was the purpose of that, and, but I, just from a legal standpoint, I believe that still allows for flexibility, it does not guarantee the vacation process, or guaranteeing vacation by approving the ILA as presented.
That's right. Thank you.
order to make sure our kids are safe. And that's the bottom line.
Again, and again, just to, and I noted your comments, and I believe our members of staff are probably addressing it. Again, to avoid any kind of further delay, the items that you addressed, as far as, I think it was item B on page nine, which is regarding the second step to immediately initiate the process for permanent vacation of School Avenue. I know that, I believe staff had changed it from a legal standpoint to allow for the vacation process to occur, but in an effort to be clearly transparent on the intention, that it wasn't a curveball being thrown to, in the effort of good collaboration, I believe that was the purpose of that. And, but I, just from a legal standpoint, I believe that still allows for flexibility. It does not guarantee the vacation process, or guaranteeing vacation by approving the ILA as presented.
That's right. Thank you. We did intentionally put in the language to call for the vacation because we wanted to be transparent, as Board members, Ziegler has made comment about. And for that reason, we'd like to keep it in. It doesn't tie anybody's hands. It doesn't say that the commission has to approve our long-term goal for the vacation. It just was our ability to be very transparent. We've heard people say the school, they don't know what the school board's next intention are, or there's something else that we're hiding. This is putting all of our, all of our intentions on the table. Our intention is for a temporary interlocal closure from 6:00 PM till whatever hour you accept, and then for the-
6:30 AM.
6:30 AM, thank you. Till whatever hour the elected officials accept, and then allow for the school board to apply as an applicant to the city for a full vacation under a different process, but recognizing that that is our intent. So it doesn't go beyond that. We don't have any intention in any other roads, or anything else. We're asking for one specific roadway, because it cuts through the middle of our campus.
And I fully understand that. It's just that when it's listed as a step two, then it makes the assumption that step one is do this, step two, that's already being done. And just for purposes of that second conversation, I just want it to be clear. And I think that, you know, I have concerns about it being listed the way that it is, but at a minimum, it needs to be a separate paragraph that's not listed as a step two that regards to the school board's intention, because this is an interlocal agreement between the two bodies. And we know how this goes when people pull the minutes and ask questions in the future. So we just want to be as strategic and transparent as we're able to be. So those were my concerns. I mean, I know that it's a subsequent conversation that we will both be having, but I think that it's something that should be addressed. Mr. Chapdeline.
To piggyback on Chair Ziegler's comments, and I think for the sake of efficiency, as you all are meeting on May 15th, I know the mayor brought up two other points regarding the closure, and perhaps having a term with an interlocal agreement. I don't know if there was consensus from our board to support that, because I think the school board, sounds like their support for a later closing time, and perhaps not a term in the ILA. So it might be good to try to figure that out while we're here.
We can't take a consent from-
Anti-aggression. So, so just so we're understanding, our, we have, we have put this on our agenda for the 15th. We have yet to attach an interlocal to that attachment. So because we expected there to be recommended changes tonight, so that gives staff a chance to make some recommend, make those changes, and add them as an attendant to the 15th meeting, we have yet to do so. It's not something that would have to be done by the school board members at the 15th meeting. We still have time as staff to evaluate the concerns that are brought up. We've clearly heard from Mayor, Mayor Eddy about her concerns regarding a step one and step two. How do others feel about that? So that as staff brings this back forward tomorrow, we can meet and go through these changes and come up with some revised language. We'd like some further understanding of where that particular item, I'm kind of saying, I'm getting some senses on other issues, but that one seems to be not clear.
Vice Mayor.
When I read through it, because somebody, you know, told me ahead of time, look for that, because then it, it's going to obligate you then to vacate the street. But the way I read it, it didn't do that. The way I read it, it looked like, you know, we're just telling you ahead of time that this is what we're planning to do. If by taking out the words step one and step two changes that, that's, that's fine. But I didn't have a problem with it being in there, and I don't have a problem with extending it to 10:00 PM.
Commissioner Brody.
I also don't have a problem extending it to 10:00 PM. I don't, if anybody has any opposition, speak up. But we should get that cleared up now, so that we don't have to go back and forth about that, and extend this any longer. As to the language in the, in the agreement, I also don't have a problem amending it. To be clear, that is, it is an intention. I mean, that's what it is. Be clear about it, and we'll move forward.
Commissioner Shaw or Ahern Koch?
I prefer that they be two separate conversations and two separate paragraphs, that they not be related in any way, shape, or form. That would be my preference. And as far as the hours, I would like to see some information about that. I believe the principal said something about getting us more information, and I, you know, we're not supposed to be taking action here tonight, so I would just like more information about the implications of that.
Commissioner Shaw.
I'll hold mine. I'm good with that.
We will, we will review, staff will review the information that the school has started to calculate, as we consider what your comments are tonight. We will look at the issue of the step one and step two. We will meet tomorrow and come up with a revised draft, and we will attach that revised draft to the board agendas for the 15th and the 21st.
Member Brown.
No, I was just thinking about some language, you know, but I can talk to you about that. I would just say that, you know, whereas, you know, in the future, the school, that the school board recognizes that in the future, we plan to come back and request to clarify that there are the two steps. I can understand what they're saying. I understand that we want to be clear that we're going to be coming back, but yet, they understand that it wants to be a, I know what you were saying, a step one and step two, but it's sound, I clearly understand what the mayor is saying here. And I think if we, instead of saying step two, if we say that we, in the future, we plan to come back and ask for vacation, it would be easier.
Mr. Lundby.
Not to throw a monkey wrench in the conversation, but my, I guess my concern is one of timing. We need to be hanging this interlocal on the board's agenda tomorrow, so I don't think we have time to wordsmith and bring back recommendations, because you're not going to be together again. So my preference would be that we have pretty solid feeling as to where you are collectively before we leave here tonight, so that what we, what we put on the school board's agenda, and what Ryan and Marlon put on your, on the city's agenda, match your expectations. And I don't know that we're there yet. And my preference would be we get there before we're done.
If, in terms of answering questions, if staff could look at language that basically separates paragraph seven on page two of the agreement, page seven, I mean, page two of the agreement, paragraph seven reads, during step one, the gates will be closed from 6:30 AM. There is consensus to consider 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, on days when school is in session. That would end that paragraph if staffs concur, and if, or the bodies concur. A new paragraph would read, the school board will initiate the process to begin. The permanent vacation, I would remove step one and step two, and just have those as two separate paragraphs, so that the community knows what the intentions of the school board is, and that there is some consideration for us to determine whether or not 10 o'clock is appropriate. The same thing could be done if staffs think that it's appropriate to bring-
I'm there.
Commissioner Shaw.
Are we, are we not taking an action at this point? You giving instructions, that's an action that hasn't been taken, and cannot be taken in this workshop?
I'm simply asking for the staff to bring back information to our boards to take action on. There's no vote. As board members and as commissioners, we can ask questions, and staff has asked us for input, so I'm giving input, and there's no vote, if that's appropriate.
No, ma'am, you used the word that there's consensus, and that would be an implication you would be implying to me, that, that, that is a, a, a point that has been made. We can't make a consensus, because that would take a unanimous conversation, you know, I do believe, from this board. And we can't make that decision in a workshop.
The request was for staff to consider the feedback from this body to change the time that both boards would agree upon at future meetings, to be voted on separately.
If I, if I can interrupt, if I understand what you're all-
Oh, sorry.
Dr. Boe.
Yes. Based on what we've heard tonight, the language that's in the interlocal agreement about the permanent vacation was just to make sure that we were completely transparent about our actions. We've now had a two-plus-hour public meeting in which we've been very open about our desire for a permanent vacation. At this point, it would be my recommendation that we send you a clean interlocal agreement that closes School Ave from 6:30 to 10:00 PM on school days. But you have a clear understanding that we will continue to move forward in the vacation process. That language serves no purpose in the interlocal, and I suggest that we just send you a clean interlocal agreement on School Ave during school days, 6:30 to 10:00 PM. And our conversation tonight will serve as notice to both your board and the community, that this is not a singular action, but we intend to pursue the permanent vacation in addition to the signing of this interlocal.
Commissioners, board members. Commissioner Shaw, I want to give you a chance to complete your thought.
I'm not going to yet take an action, because we can't in this. I hear very clearly what you're saying. Tomorrow, maybe I can talk to you. But tonight, I won't, and I hope you will respect that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brody.
I totally agree with that. Bring that over, and then we will deal with it at our meeting with a vote.
There's no request for action being taken at this time. Staff has indicated that they'd like to bring us a revised draft, which our respective staffs and commissions and boards will review separately. They have both been noticed for our first, next available commission meeting. And the boards will wait to receive the direction at that time.
Thank you.
I thought we were going to talk about research officers.
That's part two. Let's come.
I thought we were ending at eight.
Glad I'm not on the- We have an eight o'clock time.
I said that a half an hour ago. Mrs. Nadelini, we've noticed this meeting for two hours. We are now at two hours and 15 minutes. We have not addressed the second part of the discussion that was noticed for the agenda, and we have not had citizens' input. We're asking for a direction.
I will refer to the city attorney providing the right.
Mr. Fournier.
That would be my response as well. I think you certainly have, to your discretion, can decide, do you want to extend the meeting?
That's not taking action.
No problem. No, that's not taking action.
My question would be, since there are individuals that have signed up to speak under citizens' input, that this board consider allowing us to receive that feedback this evening?
Yeah, and I'd like to, you know, hear, discuss where we are on the SRO program, too. Interested in-
Mrs. Nadelini, you have more cards? Okay, just two. Commissioner Brody.
I would prefer to continue those items to another meeting. I mean, those are very in-depth items. That and the vocational training portion of it, I think we got a lot done. This is a big issue. We had way more citizen input than I think we planned for. I have no problem listening to the folks that are here, if they want to speak today, but I would be in favor of continuing those items to a future date.
Commissioners, board members.
I wouldn't, I don't mind hearing the speakers that have signed up to speak, if we could have a little bit of a break. But I'm, I am in agreement that we could also deal with those other issues at another time, if that pleases everybody else.
Since we can't officially take action, we can ask that we be given another opportunity to meet.
And I, I- A future meeting.
Right, okay. All right. All right, we'll go ahead and actually, Mrs. Nadelini, do I have all the cards?
Yes.
Okay. We just had two additional speakers that have signed up to speak.
Only two? Okay, I was going to ask for a break, though. We have two speakers. If we're, if we're continuing the rest of it.
Okay. Ed DeHus, DeHus, forgive me, I'm sorry. I know I butchered that. Martin Hyde.
Good evening. Sorry to hold this up, but anyways, I live on Wood Street.
Could you just please pronounce your last name for the record?
Diaz.
No, I screwed that up. I'm sorry.
It was good to hear, towards the end of the meeting, how it's been clarified as far as the closure of School Avenue. I have two grown boys, and I totally agree that during school and after programs, that yes, it should be closed. I totally agree. But I think you also have to think about the future, all the development that's going to be happening on School Avenue, where the Publix, Old Publix is, and the other buildings have been torn down. When the school was closed for the pipe, burying the new water main, the traffic on Wood Street is just unbelievable. And in the future, with all this future development, it's going to be worse. And I noticed, looking at your traffic study, you're only looking at north and south. You're not looking at the east and west streets. And there's very limited access, so a lot of it goes right on Wood Street. And I just ask that you do a more in-depth traffic study before you even consider closing the street permanently. But like I said, as far as the initial proposal of closing it during school, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Mr. Hyde.
Good evening again. Obviously, my name remains Martin Hyde. This will only take a couple of minutes. I, I'd like to thank the school board for coming here tonight. It saved me a trip to the landings. I've been threatening that for a while. What we've witnessed in recent times from the school board defies belief. The list includes hiring a superintendent at $185,000 a year, despite having to use taxpayers' money to have him cleared of serious allegations before his appointment was confirmed. Having that superintendent authorize $1 million-plus in office refurbishment at the landings, and then listen to him disdainfully tell you, when you questioned him about it, that essentially you should have checked the fine print of a consent order. You all condoned finding a $100,000-plus-dollar post for the disgraced former Venice High principal, after he crashed into a lamppost while three times over the drink-drive limit, which is a disgraceful example to our kids. More recently, we've been treated to somewhat bizarre allegations by the superintendent of sexual harassment towards him by one of the school board. In a desperate attempt to undermine the superintendent, who one of you incredibly recently called a visionary, another board member sought to push for the interests of another agency, against the one they were elected to represent. You all took money, voted for better education, and spent a chunk of it on inflation-busting raises for administrators, which rightly outraged many who voted for money for teachers, and not for pen pushers. HR hired a guy to teach at Booker High, who was under investigation for sexual offenses against minors, and nobody took responsibility. Now, you want to form your own special police department, which, given this list, gives me, and I suspect most parents, grave concern. If you can't hire safe high school teachers, what on God's earth gives you the belief that you're qualified to run a law enforcement agency? Seeing as we're close to the end of the school year, I'd like to give you your collective grade for the last year, which is a very strong F for three of you, plus the superintendent. My grading comments are must-do better, or risk expulsion at the ballot box anyway, later this year. Thank you, and good night.
That's all of the comments that have been provided under citizens' input, unless there are other cards that I'm not aware of. Mr. Brown?
I was being consulted by the city attorney. Legal advice, sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Anything else for the good order?
No, Madam Mayor and Madam Chair, I really appreciate the time that you all have given to this important issue. And again, you know, I know it's a very important issue to our community and to the school. So again, I thank you for allowing us to host a meeting here, and I don't think we have any more, any more to share with the commission.
Thank you to all of the staff that helped us to make this joint meeting a possible, and thank you to the school board for agreeing to meet with us. We do have other items on the agenda that we did not get to address. Hopefully, we'll get an opportunity to meet. the agenda that we did not get to address. Hopefully, we'll get an opportunity to meet. A special thank you to the students of Sarasota High School that bravely came up and spoke before us. It's no small thing to come before us and do public input in a publicly noticed, highly-charged meeting. They showed bravery, and their comments did not go unnoticed, and we appreciate that. Thank you to everyone that helped to make this possible. We will look forward to the respective updates from our staffs.
Chair Ziegler.
I just wanted to echo your statements and thank everyone for joining together. I think it's a great example of us collaborating in the greater good for our community, and I committed to continuing on the discussion to the other agenda items to see that we are able to move forward with those as well. So thank you again for everyone.
Thank you. We are joined.